I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome all of you to the October 21st, 2019 Commission Meeting. We welcome you here tonight and ask you to come back at any opportunity that you can take part in this. We thank you for being here. We have a good crowd tonight. I do have some recognitions to give out before time, before we start with Commissioner Gentry in just a second. I would like to say that because we're live on TV now, the microphones, we're having a hard time catching up with your voices. So, the microphones now are going to be switched. Ms. Doughty's not going to be doing those. They're going to be done in the back by the video group. So, when it comes your time to talk and you want to talk, please pull the mic down in front of you. It will be clicked on by those folks back there. So, just be conscious of that so that your voice kind of catches up with what it needs to on video. I know we have a Leadership Wilson Group here tonight and would like for them to stand up and let us welcome you if we can. Thank you for being here. Just our new Veteran Service Officer is in the back. I see her. If she would stand, Mrs. Abrena C. I do have to thank the folks that wore pink tonight in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you for that. I would also like to tell you that Senator Mark Potey's mom, Anita, passed away today. They'll have a small service for her here in town and then they'll have her funeral in Wisconsin as I talked to him today. So, just might remember them in your prayers. And also would like to take this opportunity, if I could, to recognize Commissioner Gary Keith that's with us. Commissioner Keith is a longtime Commissioner here and leader for us and has decided to retire for just a little while to catch up with his health. Commissioner, thank you for being here. Thank you for your leadership to this county over many years and we wish you a speedy recovery. Thank you. At this time, I would introduce Commissioner John Gentry for the prayer and the pledge.
Evening, folks. I'm here to introduce Mr. Todd Elliott, Minister of Berea Church of Christ. And I think a lot of people know him already, so I won't go through his biography. I'll just introduce him. Thank you, Todd.
Let's pray together, please. God, we thank you so much for the time that we have to be here tonight and we thank you for the many ways that you have blessed this place that we call home. God, I'm thankful for the country that we live in. I'm thankful for this great state, but especially tonight, I'm thankful for this county. I'm thankful for every person that calls this county home. And God, I'm thankful for the people that work in this room to make this the county that it is. God, I know that sometimes when we come together, we come with different ideas and different opinions about various things, but we always find the ability to come together and work together for the good of the people that call Wilson County home. And I just thank you for that spirit of camaraderie that exists in this room. And God, I pray that tonight you'll bless them as they take care of the matters that are before them. And God, I pray that you will just continue to bless our county. God, there are so many people in this county that benefit from the decisions made in this room. And so, God, I just pray that we can complain less and be grateful more because you have truly blessed us and we are very thankful for that. God, thank you so much for Christ and we thank you for the hope that we have of one day being able to be with you forever and ever and ever. And we're thankful that we do not have that hope because of any great thing we've done, but because of your mercy and your grace demonstrated to us through Him. And it's in His name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Elliott. You will now, please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Mr. Scruggs, Commissioner Scruggs. Please record. Twenty-four present.
Twenty-four present, one vacant.
His story in a moment. With this time, we were going to move that. Commissioner McFarland?
Yes, sir. I was going to share that the moment we put off next month will be a great market for Davis, Wilson, with this candidate's name back in the sun.
I plan to attend that and have some either videos or some shots and be able to report on that at the next commission. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a report from the Steering Committee. Commissioner Patton?
On Thursday, October the 10th, at 6:15 PM in the upstairs conference room, the minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Adoption of the agenda?
Agenda?
I got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Consent agenda?
There is a consent agenda, so I move for adoption of the consent agenda.
Got a motion to second on Resolution 19-10-3, the speed limit on Santa Fe Trail to be moved to 25 miles an hour. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? This time, we'll do special recognition. Commissioner Breeze?
(inaudible)
Give us just a second. We've got a crowd, a wonderful crowd. Can everybody see everybody? There's a lot of them. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring the Mount Juliet Middle School Lady Bears volleyball team. Whereas the Mount Juliet Middle School Lady Bears volleyball team finished this season with an overall season record of 31 wins and four losses. And whereas this team of talented young women went 19-0 in district play, which included winning all 16 matches in the regular season and three in the district tournament. And whereas, this is the second year in a row, they've gone undefeated in district play and won the district championship. Whereas, in addition to their outstanding district record, they finished second in the Cumberland University Tournament going 4-2, won the DCA Volleyball Tournament going 4-0, and finished second in the Lebanon High Volleyball Tournament going 4-2. And whereas, the members of the travel team include Emily Legrand, Paige Griner, Ellie Little, Carlin Brooks, Skylar Brumbach, Carly Eldridge, Sophie Snyder, Sophia Waters, Hannah Norman, Courtney Harvey, Kennedy Plummer, Lily Pfeiffer, Sully Garrick, Sarah Butler, and Gabby Barnes. And whereas, supporting JV in sixth grade players include Maggie Fletcher, Ambria McGregor, Micah Regan, Lily Monterosa, Victoria Fitzgerald, Avery Hopper, Jordan Moore, Ryan Leeson, and Jacqueline Parker. And whereas, those contributing to the success of this team as managers were Gracie Goodwin, Bella Waters, Lily Huber, Reagan Brown, and Kendall Davis. And whereas, this team was coached by Ashley Serbin and assisted by Caitlin Hammer and Haley Ryan. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee that this resolution be presented to head coach Ashley Serbin, each member of the team and coaching staff, and the support staff of Mount Juliet Middle School Lady Bears volleyball team for display at Mount Juliet Middle School in recognition of the outstanding season of the Mount Juliet Middle School Lady Bears volleyball team.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you all could come to the podium and just introduce yourself on your way out. I have, everyone's going to get a copy of the resolution. I'm going to give it to your coach and she'll give it to you tomorrow at your awards banquet. Congratulations. Courtney Harvey. Paige Griner. Sophia Waters. Carly Eldridge. Emily Legrand. Carlin Brooks. Lily Monterosa. Lily Pfeiffer. Sarah Butler. Ellie Little. Gabby Barnes. Hannah Norman. Kennedy Plummer. Micah Regan. Skylar Brumbach. Reagan Brown. Victoria Fitzgerald. Avery Hopper. Maggie Fletcher. Sully Garrick. Sophie Snyder. Bella Waters. Haley Ryan. Caitlin Hammer.
Congratulations, Lady Bears. And this time now, special recognition would be Commissioner Sarah Patton.
Good evening, everyone. We have a special recognition tonight and a very special person and you should all be so pleased you're here to hear this. He's well-known by so many of us here that if each Commissioner came up that knew him, there'd be nobody sitting out there in the seats. But at this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Clyde Woods, if you would, please to come forward, and his daughters. Now, he has two daughters that are coming from the back there. And for the few of you who don't know, this is Mr. Clyde Woods. And Mr. Clyde Woods is celebrating his 100th birthday. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring Clyde Thomas Woods on his 100th birthday. Whereas Clyde Thomas Woods, a resident of Commerce, Tennessee, turned 100 years old on September the 18th, 2019. And I was very pleased to attend your birthday party. That was some good fish. And whereas, the story of his life is a history lesson in itself while teaching the values of hard work, love, commitment, and dedication. And whereas, as a baby, after being born in the Smith County community of Brush Creek, his parents, Lillard and Essie Lee Woods, moved across the Wilson County line to Commerce, where he continues to reside to this day. And whereas, Mr. Woods went through the third or fourth grade when school was held in the Richmond United Methodist Church. But while limited in book education, his education from life experiences is virtually unmatched. And whereas, Clyde Woods began working on a farm at age five or six behind a turning plow pulled by two mules. And whereas, his first job as a youth earned him $1 a week. And by his early twenties, he was earning 75 cents a day. And whereas, at the age of 18, he married his school sweetheart, Ellen Frances Bell, age 19, in April 1938. And the two were married for 72 years until her death in 2011 at the age of 92. And whereas, from this blessed union, three sons and four daughters were born, leading to four grandchildren and a whole lot of great-grandchildren. And whereas, after decades of farming, Clyde Woods was employed by the Wilson County Road Commission from 1973 until the 1980s before retiring from public work. And whereas, while retired from public work, Mr. Woods did not retire from life as he continues to serve as president of the Dow Richmond Male Chorus, where he has been in that group since he was 71, singing alto in the choir, in the chorus. And whereas, his pastor says that he sings every first Sunday and that when we go out on Sundays and Saturdays to sing at other churches. And whereas, he continues to say, active helping his daughter mow their lawn, watching a lot of television, enjoying eating, reading his Bible every day, and trying to put into practice what he believes the Lord has left him here to do, and that is to bless somebody else. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee that we hereby honor Clyde Thomas Woods of the Commerce Community of Wilson County, Tennessee for reaching the milestone of his 100th birthday and wish for him many more birthdays as he continues to be a role model and an inspiration to others.
All in favor, say aye.
You want to say something? Yes, I make a motion to be accepted.
All in favor, say aye.
I want to say a word or two to all of y'all. I've been in this world a long time. And listen, I had a good time working with the Smith Brothers on their phone and all the other farmers I worked for and I thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'd hope all of y'all can do the same thing.
Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Clyde, we want to sing Happy Birthday to you. Are you ready? We're going to sing Happy Birthday to you. Here we go, guys. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
All of y'all people, let me come out and see you one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Clyde. Appreciate that. Thank all of you for being here. To my knowledge, I have two other special recognitions that have been pulled. Any other ones that have come before this body tonight before we move forward with special recognitions? Okay? At that time, we'll go for the report of the Minutes Committee.
Upstairs conference room in the courthouse, the minutes of the committee meeting are in the packet along with the amended minutes of the September the 16th Commission Meeting. Make a motion for this report to be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? We'll go with the reading of the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Thank you. I do have three or four things to tell you. One, I know Commissioner Venata spent many times working on the three-star accreditation for our county. And of course, we just received that. Susan Shaw in our office did that. But just a little bit of extra to that, Susan has worked with G.C. Hickson with the JCDB, which kind of took care of the funding of this, and Robert Baines with the Director of Operations. And we'll have a sign, a new sign, for three-star at each one of the entrances into Wilson County. So, we're excited about that. Also, because of three-star, there were three goals they asked us to complete or to try to achieve. We came up with two of them, but they asked us to do workforce. Susan in our office worked on that and they have just been granted a $40,250 grant for workforce development. And so, that is going to be good. They're working with Melanie Mentor on that, I believe, as well. I think you got an email and a note from both WEMA and from Vanderbilt about them moving to life flight and I hope you've got that. If you have any questions, you can see me about that. Cindy Lynch at the landfill is still looking for people that have CDL driver's license. So, we're kind of working for her to see if we can find people either part-time or full-time, pay 17.61 an hour. So, if anybody you know out there looking to make a little extra money or needs a full-time job, please send them to see Ms. Cindy. I've had questions asked as well about the admissions testing. When is that going to go away? So, we reached out to Ms. Emily and she said that there are two areas that are still working on this. Nashville area is one of them. Chattanooga's the other one. They're kind of working simultaneously. What has to happen now is a public hearing, which is going to happen in Nashville on November the 19th and in Chattanooga on November the 21st. And that is where they will answer questions from the public about, okay, when the admissions goes away, how is that going to affect our air quality? And so, they'll go through those two public hearings and then the EPA gets the final draft from Nashville in our case and they have 18 months to make that decision. Normally, it's about 12 months, but so we're looking at about a year from now before they come back and tell the state that they're done with this. And the state is the people that have the contracts with these local companies that you go to and get your car tested. We do not have that contract. I know Commissioner Venata, I believe, made sure that everybody had one of these on their desk and I'd like to thank Commissioner Gentry, Commissioner Rich, and Commissioner Venata for working hard on redoing these or revising our handbooks. And Mr. Venata, thank you for the book. I really enjoyed that and I know others have done as well because that is, it's been neat and the table of contents have really added to that. Sarah Davenport is working with Erin in IT to make it where it's computer-friendly, where we can click on it and go straight to the page that you want. And so, she will have that done hopefully soon along with Erin. Other than that, those are my announcements for today and I'll move on to the elections and appointments. Just to kind of clarify where we're at, we will go out of session in just a minute and allow the public to nominate for District 17. You're allowed to step to the podium, please, back at the back and make your nomination if you'd like to. It doesn't have to be long in that case and you don't have to repeat somebody else that's already been nominated. The commission will hear your voice, okay? But we'll close public comment when you get through and then we'll go to the commission floor. Only the folks on the commission floor are allowed to make the nomination after they've heard from you. The people that's nominated from the commission floor are the only ones that we will be voting on. So, you may mention somebody back there, but unless a commissioner nominates them, they will not be voted on. Once we finish voting, don't let me forget, I forgot the last time, once we come down to the nominees that are nominated from the floor, we're going to allow that person or persons to speak from the podium up in the front here and address the commission for four or five minutes or whatever they want to say to the commission. And then we will, at that time, go back into session. No, we'll already be back into session and we'll allow you to vote. Remember, it takes a majority of 13 to win the nomination. So, if we have six people nominated in the first time around, nobody has 13, after the first set of votes go, we'll drop off the lowest number and then re-vote again until we get a majority of 13. Any questions from the commission before we start this process? Seeing none, I'll have a motion to go out of session. Second? All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Okay. This time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone's welcome to speak to the back. Please be sure the mic is on and you may make your nominations. Commissioner Keith, you can speak from right where you're at, it's completely fine.
Can you hear me?
Is that mic on, sir?
First thing I want to say is I'd rather be sitting over there in my seat than over here, but circumstances says I need to be over here. I gave my seat up because I promised the people in my district that I would work as hard as I could and I think I've done that. I live on my record. And I think what it comes down to is who's people of the 17th District, who do they want? Who do they need? And who's got a high work ethics? And I wanted to be here to nominate my son Rusty, who's lived over there for 17 years, got four kids in school, one in college, a total of four. But he's got good, high work ethics. In this position, coming to the county commission meeting on Monday night once a month, that's not all there is to it. It's not uncommon at all to be up here three, four, or five times a week. And that happens a lot and you've got to be dedicated. And I think Rusty is that type of person. So, I'm here to ask the commissioners to consider my son Rusty Keith.
Someone else?
My name is Kimberly O'Neal and I'm a resident of Wilson County and I recommend that Rusty Keith be allowed to take his father's vacated seat because he has shown that he loves and cares about his community. He is our school resource officer at Gladeville and he's a very good friend. When I lost my daddy suddenly in March, he came to my house and brought food because he knew that family would be gathering there. He ran for school board and even though he didn't win, it showed his servant attitude and his kindness and so I hope that he'll get to fill his daddy's position.
Hi, my name is Melanie Williams and I teach at Gladeville, so I also work with Officer Keith, as we know him, at Gladeville. I've been there since he was hired several years ago and he does a great job not only keeping our school safe, but he's also a very positive role model for all of our kids. They all trust him and he goes above and beyond his call of duty at our school. So, I highly recommend that he be considered for this position.
And let me say this, as we go back earlier, it is not a popular vote by the public. So, once someone is nominated, that is really good for that person. I appreciate the support and all of that, but again, we're just looking for nominations from you. So, once somebody's heard, if you would allow us to go forward with that, I would appreciate that. Anyone else? Commissioner Keith?
Last thing. Like I say, it's about who the district wants. And Rusty picked up his petition in two days' time. He had eight pages of signatures that signed for him to get this position. So, please keep that in mind.
Sir?
Yes, I'm Steve Thompson. I'm Joe Ali's neighbor and he's just a very good neighbor. He's active in the community and I just really enjoy being his neighbor and I think he would make a great commissioner for this county.
Thank you.
Chad Williams, I would like to nominate Mr. Ken Nelson Jr. He has a servant's heart, seen do a whole lot of good things in the community, think he'd do good for the district.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll have three people that have been nominated by the public, Rusty Keith, Joe Ali, and Mr. Ken Nelson Jr. I like a motion to close public comment and go back into session. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Okay. This time now, we will be back into session and I'll open up the floor for nominations. Commissioner Ash?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Rusty Keith.
Commissioner Costley?
I'd like to nominate Ken Nelson Jr.
Commissioner Patton?
I'd like to nominate Joe Ali.
Any other nominations? Do you have a motion nominate? I'm sorry. Commissioner Bishop?
Sandy Donnell that I would nominate her, but I don't see her and I don't know if... Do you still wish to be nominated?
Ms. Sandy Donnell?
Yes, please.
Any other nominations coming from the floor?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. This time, we'll have four for you to vote on and we'll pass those out and ask our pro temp to help us as well. So, you'll have, I'm sorry, I did it again. Sit down, Commissioner, my bad. I get in such a hurry. I get in such a hurry. Somebody has to keep me in line. We're going to go with the order that they were nominated from the commission floor, so at this time, I'll ask Commissioner, I mean Rusty Keith, if you would come forward and address the commission, and you're welcome to do it from the podium back there.
You know, tonight, I've been given a unique opportunity, one in which I don't take lightly. A son's greatest wish is to make his father proud. Today, with your help, we can make this happen. To my esteemed and dear county commission members, please join us tonight in supporting Gary Keith, a modern-day patriot and statesman, in his last direct respectful request to allow his son, myself, Rusty Keith, to fill his seat in District Seventeen for the short period of the next ten months until the next general election. The Keith family as a whole, praise. We have my father for several years to come, and by giving a vote here for myself, we'll allow Gary Keith, from home, to stay involved and be part of something he loves so dearly. The other night, he told me he misses it already. My father and I both pray to God that this honorable county commission will find it in their hearts to accommodate Gary Keith in this transition of life. I thank each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart, and God bless us all.
Mr. Ken Nelson Jr.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Ken Nelson Jr., live out there on Horn Springs Road. I've been asked to run for a couple of different offices in the past, and I just wasn't quite ready. At this point right here, I'm ready to serve, and I'll make a commitment to listen and reason with constituents of District Seventeen, even the ones that don't like me. And I ask for your support, and I hope to thank you for having me, and have a great evening.
Mr. Joe Ali?
Hello, everyone. I'm Joe Ali, and I'm applying for a job this evening. It has been a busy four weeks. I get a chance to know all your names, and I get a chance to talk to a lot of you, and learn about you guys, and you had to learn about me, too. So, but first, I would like to say happy anniversary to, to my wife. Today, October twenty-first, is our anniversary. I have always promised her to take her to a romantic place, and great place, and, and here we are. So happy anniversary. So, who am I? I'm a husband, I'm a father, two kids, Danielle and Adam. Danielle, Law School, University of Memphis, Adam, University of Tennessee in Knoxville. So also, I'm a business owner. For the past sixteen years, I've been a business owner in the community, and, and that's who I am. Now, do I qualify for this job or not? That's the biggest question here among you guys. I tell you, if you had a chance to meet me before, you would have known that I qualify for this job. Habitat for Humanity asked me to become a board member with them, and the boards decided to became, you know, to make me the chairman of the board, not one year, two years in a row. Then also, I was the voice of Wilson County and Davidson County. So for three years, I represented Wilson County for Habitat and Davidson County Board of Directors. Leadership Wilson, and I had a chance to do Leadership Wilson. Usually, after you finish Leadership Wilson, you have a chance to do a project for the community. Usually, it takes about two, three hours, Saturday morning or Saturday evening. Myself and my group, we did a lot. We were able to do it, it took us three days, hundreds of Wilson County High School. The reason why we did all that is to put Wilson County on a, on Guinness World Record. So now, right now, if you look in the Guinness World Record, you see Wilson County, for a hundred-meter relay, we have, we're still there as the fastest, how many, I'm not seeing, fastest people running a hundred-meter relay, and we've done that. Guys, I'm, I love my county, I love my city, and I would love to serve my community here in District Seventeen. Other people are qualifying, too. It's not just me, but I qualify. This seat needs energy, and I have it, to give back to my community. So please, help me out, and I would love to, to become one of you guys. God bless you all. God bless our county. God bless America.
Ms. Sandy Donnell?
Gentlemen of the commission, can you hear me? I have served as a county commission, commissioner, several years ago, and does that make me qualified? Well, I think it does a little, because I know what it's like. I know what you do. Things have changed, but it's still a tough job, and I realize that. When I heard about Gary Keith resigning, and this man has done an amazing job, and he will, it's going to be difficult for anybody to fill his shoes, and I sent a letter out saying that, and I believe that. He's been an asset to this county, and, and to me, in our district, and I truly appreciate that. Over the past three years, I have been up at the planning commission for the city of Lebanon, working with and against certain things that are going on, that I disagreed with, and the neighbors of the Seventeenth District appreciated my voice, because I spoke on behalf of what we needed to do, which is, not that I'm against developing, but I am against bringing developers in here from out of state who don't know our county, and then they leave very often, and we're stuck. We're stuck with the bills for education, for schools, to hire more sheriff's department workers, to build more fire stations. Now, I know realtors probably are mad at me saying this, but I think until we come up with a plan to accommodate development, and come up with a better plan than we have maybe right now, we need to work on it. We really do. In addition to that, over the years, I served with Terry when he was sheriff, and my thing has always been to try and save money for this county, and I often say that, you know, if, if you think in terms of how you run your household, that's how we need to run the county, and that is to watch our money. When we were looking at building a jail, I remember saying to Terry and to the commission that, you know, we have the Highland Heights School, and rather than building from scratch, we could put the money into restoring a, a building that's already there, and that's what we did. I, we went to several locations across the state to look at the jails, and to see, you know, the way they had done things. The other thing, and that I remember, and this is, I think, prior to Terry being our sheriff, was when I went into the jail, and I saw how the inmates were sitting around, and it was like they were on vacation, this troubled me. And so I came up with the idea about, and I, I think we still do it, having the victory gardens, and picking up trash on the side of the roads, and putting them to work, instead of just sitting there, and we were feeding them, basically. Another thing that during my reign was my husband, Jimmy Donnell, which some of you know, worked for the State Department of Transportation. He was a planner, and the commission, road commissioners, at that time, were unhappy with some of our commissioners, and they were rezoning it so that they'd be running against each other. And my husband looked at the plan, I showed it to him, I said, what could we do? And he took that plan and rezoned the entire county, and we brought it to Sammy Edwards at the time, and that's what they used, is what he did. Not that I did it, but I was fortunate enough to have somebody with the knowledge to do something like that. I've lived here most of my life. I came to Lebanon when I was eighteen years old. I lived here full-time, actually, on the farm, and I own this farm, but I was very honest with you all when I said I live there, I live in Mount Juliet, and I also live in Florida. But I am here to represent the Seventeenth District, and I appreciate any help that you can give me this evening. But whoever gets it, I will be proud to stand beside and help in any way I can. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and that concludes all four of the candidates at this time. I'll ask Ms. Doughty if she will help pass out the ballots. Commissioner Marlowe, I'll go back and ask you to give assistance, if you will. Remember, you are to vote for one of the candidates nominated. Please be sure and sign your ballot, or it will not be counted. Four options you have are Rusty Keith, Ken Nelson Jr., Joe Ali, and Sandy Donnell. For the public, we're voting a paper ballot. That is the way our rules read, but all ballots are not secret. After the meeting is over, you'll be able to see who everybody voted for. All those are public knowledge. Nothing is, is concealed. We just vote by paper ballot during the process. I will say this person will serve until the general election on August the sixth, 2020, and tonight, once they are appointed, they will take the oath of office and take the seat, and finish this meeting with us. Donnell. Ali.
Yep.
Your top vote, here's Mr. Ali and Keith. Eleven for Ali, seven for Keith. Eleven for Mr. Ali, seven for Mr. Keith, five for Mr. Nelson, and one for Ms. Donnell. So we'll re-vote. Ms. Donnell will roll off, and now you'll have the option of three to vote for. I don't think so, Mike. Is that right?
The lowest.
The lowest score drops off, and then, and then we vote for the people that are left.
That's right.
So it'll be your top three. So now you will re-vote. Ms. Donnell, thank you for applying. You will have the option now to vote for Rusty Keith, Ken Nelson Jr., Joe Ali. Please be sure and sign your name, and put your district on your ballot, please. Takes thirteen votes, the majority of thirteen to win this election. Ali. Ali. God, he gave Mr. the one vote. Be Mr. Keith and Mr. Ali. Mr. Nelson was low. Mr. Ali had thirteen votes. Keith had six votes. Mr. Nelson had five votes. Mr. Ali, receiving the majority of thirteen votes, is the District Seventeen Commissioner. Mr. Ali, if you will, please step to the podium at the back, if you would. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Ali, do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will perform.
I will perform.
With fidelity.
D fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I have been elected, and which I'm about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the constitutions of Tennessee and the United States, and to faithfully perform the duties of the office of county commissioner, representing the Seventeenth District of Wilson County, Tennessee. So help me God. Thank you, and you may take your seats, sir. I thank y'all of you for being a part of this process tonight. Welcome, Commissioner Ali. To the stands. This time now, Commissioner Ali, Commissioner Breeze will kind of guide you a little bit. Commissioner Ali. Commissioner Ali. She will, Commissioner Brees and Commissioner Weathers will kind of guide you on the voting We'll stick with Commissioner Brees. But you have a packet in front of you, and you will be, you're taking the office tonight, and so therefore you'll be allowed to vote, of course. If you see something that you have not already schooled yourself on, you're welcome to a stand, I'm assuming, if you'd like to do that. But I cannot assume that you haven't already been briefed of what's going on tonight, and I'm assuming that if you were taken the office, you probably had educated yourself as well. This time, we will need to elect a person to serve on the Insurance Committee in absence of Commissioner Keith, which vacated that position. And so at this time, I will take nominations from the floor for the Insurance Committee. Commissioner Gentry.
I nominate Dan Walker.
Commissioner Walker. Commissioner McFarland.
Bobby Franklin.
Mr. Bobby Franklin. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, do I hear a motion nomination cease in a second? All in favor, say aye. And opposed, okay. This time, we will vote on two people. Select one of those, please, to be on the Insurance Committee. I know there'll be some insurance resolutions coming up tonight. I would like to brag on that committee and for the work that's been done there in that committee. It is a tough committee to serve on. Your options are two tonight, Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Franklin. Please vote for one. Do we have all of your ballots? Everybody's ballots are turned in, we're ready to go.
Walker. Franklin. Franklin. Walker. 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 Franklin.
Fifteen votes for Mr. Walker. Commissioner Walker, ten votes for Mr. Franklin. Commissioner Walker, congratulations, you are on the Insurance Committee. Thank you. This time, you have a notary list in front of you, so I'll make a motion, I'll ask for a motion to approve that list. Any discussion? Commissioner Costley.
Yeah, there's one suspect over here, Kayla Horvath. I don't know about her. That's my daughter. I'm just messing with you.
You understand apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Alrighty, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, okay. For Fourth Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Emergency Management Directors' Report, Mr. Jeremy Hobbs.
Good evening. Director Cooper's still out. His brother's doing fine. He made it out of the hospital, so hopefully he'll be back to work this week. Right now, he's taking care of him at home, so he said everything's going good. The month of September calls, medical eleven hundred forty-eight, fire fifty-four, rescue two hundred twenty-six. Total call for the month is fourteen twenty-eight. Said emergency management activities, the ELP meetings, hazmat workshop, a DART meeting, and a pipeline meeting. And y'all should have all the numbers in your packet. Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Hobbs? Yes, sir. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, the Law Enforcement Committee met the Criminal Justice Center on October the third. Minutizing your package, I make a motion, these being received, file.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Sheriff's Report, Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor, County Commissioners. Your report's in your packet. Some of the numbers, as usual, it's the usual numbers. I go down to the jail population, it continues to be over capacity, and we're working every day to keep that under control the best we can, but it's getting pretty difficult. Then make work buses and different things, staying busy throughout, all over the county. If you know any areas that really need any pickup or anything like that, let one of us know, and we'll get out there. One thing I do want you to take notice of is the SRO report that's on the third, the third page. Them numbers alone sit there and tell you the numbers of interactions these SROs have with students, teachers, faculty, parents, custodial issues every day, and it's taking that burden off the teachers and the principals. But they're working hard every day. We had a fall break here recently, we're back in school now, so they're back up and running. It's been a busy time of year, a lot of training, different things going on, but unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, the Education Committee met our code of ten in the state's court, only five thirty. If there are no questions, I move the committee to recede the file.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Director of Schools' Report, Dr. Wright is at a conference. Mr. Hall is in the back, back there. He is, he will answer any questions if you have anything in that, in your education report, and there is a packet that has been put on your desk. Commissioner McFarland.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have listened to, on the streaming of the Board, Education Board meeting last three periods, and was unable to hear it. The audio was not good from the school board, and I'd like to ask you, and like to ask Assistant Director Schools to see if you can't get that piped into our TV channel, maybe the audio will be better. We have a free TV channel, would like very much for them to come onboard with our TV, so audio would be better. Thank you very much.
Okay. We will have a discussion, I'll work with Mr. Hall on that. Any other comments? There a motion to approve the report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Restor Dees' Report, Ms. Jackie Murphy.
It was in the packet.
It was in the packet? So if there's any question, Ms. Murphy, she is here. Thank you for being here, Ms. Murphy. Do I hear a motion to approve the report? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Trustees' Report, Mr. Major.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like to say congratulations to Mr. Joe Ali. Like to welcome all the people out there in the audience. We, this year, we built out several more thousand tax notices than we did last year. We built out over sixty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-five tax notices this year. We have collected right at ninety-seven percent of all the taxes to be collected last year, and by the time I turn these over to the Clerk and Master, we will collect it over ninety-nine percent. Your report is on, right in front of you. You have nine CDs at different banks drawing. There's the amount of the interest that each one of them is drawing, total of twenty-nine million, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. As of this morning, as of two minutes after nine o'clock, according to Mr. Keith Jernigan, we have, Youth County has in there, fifty-four million, three hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. This concludes my report.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you, Mr. Major.
Mayor and Commissioners, to this date, we've paved forty-five point two eight-eight miles, and we're still paving. Our bushhogs are still running. There's not a whole lot to bush hog, but they're cleaning up in areas that they couldn't get back when it was growing. Still doing our patching, and still doing our regular maintenance. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes, Mr. Allen. One vote away from approving a three-point-six-million-square-foot building called Project Sam on East Division and Golden Bear Parkway, and they've been talking about improving East Division, and much of that that they're talking about is in the county. So I would urge you to reach out to the city of Mount Juliet as quick as you can.
Well, no, I hadn't. I'd heard a little bit about it, but nobody's reached out to me about it. But the most of it, the way I understand, is gonna be in the city limits.
They're going past that on the other side of Bear Parkway now, and so.
Yeah. Well, we're trying to get them to take that section anyway. There's a section down through there, it's just, it's less than a mile long, it's just, you know, it's just out there in limbo. We've talked about that, and that's the last I've heard.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Mayor Commissioners, I think the last time I was supposed to give a report, we were tied up, and they postponed, so it's been a while since I got up here, kind of tell you what's going on out at the Ag Center. If you go in, into the front gate, we just resurfaced the road going right into the Expo. We just got that done, and I think y'all will be happy with that. I thought briefly I'll go over some of the things that's fixing to happen. This Saturday Ever Building that we have out there will be rented. The Covered Arena will have the American Celebration Tour. You can look online and get information on that. November the sixteenth, the Danks and Lights of Christmas, they are gonna open up. They've been out there putting lights up since about the twentieth of September. In November, we got the Lucky Fox Horse Show. Also, this time in November, we got the Tennessee High School Rodeo Finals. Also in November, we got a big roping event in the Covered Arena. Also, the twenty-ninth, Confederate Railroad will do a concert, a benefit concert in the Covered Arena. Then in 2020, we got the, all of you know, the Tennessee Beef Arabication. Most of you know, last year where it rained so much, the Smoke on the Shores, the big barbecue deal that was in Nashville, they had it out at, on Peyton Road, and they liked it so well that they're coming back again this year, so we're glad that they're returning. Also, in June of 2020, we got the Eastern Regional Junior Angus Show. Most of you know that we had two Junior Nationals at the facility this year, the first time that they'd ever been that type Junior Nationals, the Shorthorn Junior National, which maxed us out. Far as cattle, we had six hundred and fifty-seven head of cattle. We had kids there showing from, I think it was twenty-eight states. We filled up every motel room we had in Wilson County. I put a few of them in Rutherford County. We had a pretty good bunch of them that actually stayed in Coogal. So, you know, we need more motel space when we got this type of events. I think between BMW and that Shorthorn Junior National in June, I think y'all got a report showing how much increase in sale tax so forth you had for the, for the month of June. I think that's what everybody's shooting for. Also, in 2020, we picked up everybody's favorite barbecue and hot sauce festival, and this will be in June, and it's gonna be a really big event. They've rented the ag grounds. Also, the Southeastern Truck Nationals will be a new event. It's coming in July. Also, we got a Holstein Show that'll be new in July of 2020. The Indian Powwow, they've moved to, first time that they're gonna be at the James Lee Ward Ag Center in September. And also in 2020, we got the Big Boy Scouts Group that's been there before. In 2021, we're already booking up, we've got the Red Angus Junior National. Also, most of you know how big the BMW deal was here for us in June. In July of '21, we've got Airstream. They're gonna do their national Airstream RV deal at the Ward Center. We're looking, they're telling us we'll have between eight hundred and a thousand RVs there, and, you know, people said, well, you know, they're not staying in motels. What a lot of you don't understand is when these national groups come in, the vendors stay in the motel, so, you know, right now, we do good to get the vendors into the motels. Also, in October of '21, we got the Southeastern Cushman Motor Scooter Club, it's having their big deal there. Last week, we just did another one, it'll be on the same order, and it'll be a lot bigger impact than BMW was for us. It's, it's called the Escapies RV Club, which is, will be in, in June of 2022, and it'll, just from the standpoint of what our rental fee, it will get out of, that'll be twice the size of BMW. And they're, they're actually the third-largest RV club in America, and they're gonna do their national RV deal at the. their national RV deal at the Ward Ag Center. I think we're trying to get as many things there as we can, and I hope y'all are satisfied with it. And I challenge all of you to come out, a lot of you Commissioners come out and I see you, but if you'll just give me a call, I'll ride you around with Commissioner Weathers. And I can tell you, I got your sign up on Friday, so you can tell your constituents that the sign's corrected and on the building for you tomorrow night. So, anybody else got any questions?
I hear a motion to get it on the floor first. I do have several questions. Got a motion in second now, ready for discussion. Commissioner Rich?
Yes, I'm just going to say, thirteen years ago, the Ag Center had the East-West Building and a couple of more outbuildings. And in thirteen years now, like Quentin just said, look at all the national events we're having here. You know, this Ag Center and the Expo Center has put Wilson County on the map, for sure. It really has. I'd like to commend Quentin. Quentin's doing a great job. He's going out, he's seeing a lot of people, and along with the rest of his staff and everything, we're doing a great job. But in thirteen years, we have come from a few buildings to holding several national events. And I think you named probably, what, five national events, maybe six, that we're going to have next year. I think that's a great accomplishment.
Mr. Glover?
Friends with the ones who run the Dancing Lights, and I just want to bring to your attention that November seventeenth through the twenty-first, any veteran, anyone that's active duty, retired military, can come for free. You can go through the entire light show for free, and if you can't make it during that time period, then you just let them know that you're a veteran, show them your ID, and you get five dollars off.
Thank you for that information. We'll try to get that tomorrow from you for Sarah, so we can get that out as well. Thank you. Commissioner Van Adam?
I was just going to add to what Kenny was saying, how everything has grown so much out there. I remember the first camping group that we had back there, I think it was in ninety-six. And another question, I don't know why Quentin does in his spare time, because he spends it all out there. Well, thank you. Good job. Exactly. He doesn't have it. Great job.
Any other questions for Mr. Quentin? All in favor say aye. And opposed? Thank you, Mr. Quentin. I appreciate it. Commissioner Stafford?
Yes, please. While he's sitting down, I am about to be a place. Somebody turn the air off. I am freezing. I mean, she's tried, but I am cold. I'm sending you the bill. That ain't going to help my hands.
I will work on it. Thank you for disrupting my meeting. The Expo Center report, Ms. Charity Ask, her and Zindel come next month because it is a three-year anniversary and bring you the same kind of report that Mr. Quentin did, so we'll do that. I will work on that, Commissioner Stafford, in just a second when I get a break here. Report from Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers. Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs?
We met September twenty-fourth, five p.m. Minutes are in your packet, moves be filed.
Got a motion in second, discussion now? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe?
Minutes are in your packet, move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Audit, Commissioner Bernard?
No report.
Cable TV and Back Tax, Commissioner Walker?
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Van Adam?
Yes, we met Tuesday, October the first, in the conference room. And I encourage you to read your report and see what all is happening with tourism and how they're working together with all the chambers and Fiddler's Grove and the Expo Center, getting everything in here. They had the Tough Mudder event. For those of you that do not know what it was, they had an event at the Fiddler's Grove the night before, and I want to thank Mayor Hutto for going out, and he did the goat yoga. And it was on Facebook, so thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I enjoyed it.
It's fine. I move my report, Mr. Stevens, to file.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Ethics, Commissioner Ash?
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Weathers?
We met at six-thirty tonight. I voted on, right? And the minutes will be in your packet next month.
Thank you so much.
Move your swing file.
All in favor say aye. And opposed? Okay. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton?
Health and Recreation met twice this month. Tuesday, September the seventeenth, at six o'clock, and September the twenty-fourth, at six o'clock. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
I got a motion in second now. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? I do want to thank your committee for the work that they're doing there. I know that's a long, drawed-out process, and I really appreciate that.
We're meeting again, I think it's Tuesday night, so is that Monday? Yeah, tomorrow night.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash?
Mr. Chairman, the Insurance Committee met October the seventh here in the Courthouse. There are three resolutions in the packet tonight. They've all been vetted by the committee. I just want to take an opportunity to thank our staff here in the Courthouse. It works diligently on employee insurance and our relationship with Cigna and THW and now with Vanderbilt. So the committee itself has been working very hard. They always have. Mr. Walker, welcome to the swamp. This committee you don't want to be on when things are bad. But I want to thank the employees who've taken ownership of their insurance problems, and they've, to date, we have more employees now than we had four years ago, and our plan is solvent, so I'd encourage you to vote for those three amendments tonight. Thank you.
Got a motion to approve the report?
Thank you, second.
Okay. A motion in second now. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Officer Giller, would you reach out and find the custodian that's on this floor here and ask them, could they help my air out, please? Took me a minute, Commissioner Stafford, but I worked on that for you. Judicial, Commissioner Glover?
Over first at five p.m. in the building right outside the commission room here. Move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland?
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Gentry?
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs?
October fourth, two thousand nineteen. It says nine-thirty, but it was nine o'clock, beating what's called order. So.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Finance Director's Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard?
I only have one major piece of business for you tonight. That is a report on debt obligation that's in your packet. We did a bond issue that you guys approved. Face amount, three million, three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. We received a premium of three-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, and our total interest cost is two-point-two-nine percent, which I thought was outstanding. That is, of course, going for school athletic facilities. The cost of issuance, financial advisor fees for Stevens, Inc., was twenty-four thousand, five-hundred. Bond counsel, Basbury and Sims, fifteen thousand. Two-thousand issuer's counsel. U.S. Bank paying agent fee, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Standard and Poor's rating agencies, which our rating was affirmed at double-A plus, ten-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Underwriters discount, nineteen thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, and printing and advertising fees of nine-hundred-and-eighty-three, for a total cost of issuance of seventy-three thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. So that is required to be submitted to you guys at the meeting. The finance report is in your packet. There's nothing unusual here. Well, there's one thing unusual. I will point your attention to page, page seven of nine. We could look at a different page, too, but oh, about up in that first section, revenues and general debt service, one-fifty-one, you look down, do you find account number four-oh-two-eight-five, adequate facilities development tax? You'll see that you've received seventy-six percent of what we budgeted to receive for the entire year in the first three months. Y'all know why. But that is an anomaly that I should probably point out to you. Outside of that, of course, there was some information on debt on your desk that I had prepared for Commissioner McFarland, who I think gave it to you guys. So outside of that, that concludes my report, unless you have anything for me.
I got a motion, a second, I got a second now. Discussion, Commissioner McFarland?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to compliment Director Aaron Maynard. I asked last week to get exactly where we were on all the bond issues and what our debt was, and he, in a day's time, he got it all whipped up and provided this sheet, and I made copies at home and brought them and put lady sheet on everybody's desk, so we know when the bonds roll off and what our total debt was. And I thank him for that, and I just wanted to make everybody aware it was here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McFarland. That's obviously something we keep up to date. There was one thing, this three million, three-ninety-five we talked about last night that I hadn't put on there yet, so that was it. And Mr. Ali, welcome.
Yes, ma'am. In fact, okay, okay.
Mr. Gentry?
On this, see, page seven on revenues, interest earned. We've earned quite a bit more than was budgeted. Can you explain that?
I would say I'm glad you saw that, John, because previously, honestly, I had not. Let me look at that one and get back to you. I'm going to say that's got to be interest on a outstanding bond proceeds, probably related to the high school, but I'll need to double-check on that. I don't know how often those interest payments get made.
That's over...
Yeah, that's...
Two thousand four...
Yeah, that's huge. That's huge. Yeah, I didn't see that previously.
Wherever we earned it, let's invest more there, okay?
Yeah, well, obviously, if you're earning that kind of interest, there's a lot of money behind it, and probably that smells like bond proceeds to me.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Thank you. Mr. Maynard, just for the record, on those interest rates, that's when we get to borrow less money because we're earning the interest that we get to use to make that bond up. Would that be correct?
Say it again, Mayor, I'm so sorry.
So in other words, when I need X number of dollars out here and we go to borrow that amount of money, because of the amount of money I earn back in interest, we don't have to borrow as much?
Yeah, that's why it goes into debt service. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Walker?
Just a quick question. Interest on our checking account, what line item does that show up on in here?
All the interest from all accounts goes into Fund One-Fifty-One. The school system may have some interest from some of its accounts that goes into the school system, but all the interest from every account that goes, that is controlled by the county, goes into the debt service.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Maynard. We've already approved the report, so we'll move on to report from the Budget Committee. Commissioner Marlowe?
Committee met Thursday, October the tenth, at six-thirty in the conference room. I move the minutes be received and filed.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Resolutions now. Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution nineteen-ten-four, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and approach appropriation resolution for the 2019-20 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the Animal Control Reserve Fund to Animal Control.
Motion approved.
I got a motion now and a second, or any discussion? Okay. We'll be ready to vote in just a second. She's working on that.
Mr. Ali is still going to say Keith, but it will be corrected by next month.
See, just know that Mr. Ali's vote up there will be registered as Mr. Keith, but it will be corrected by next month, and so we'll be ready to roll. But when you look at that, you'll know what that means. Are we ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-five, yes.
Twenty-five, yes, zero, no. Resolution passes. Continue.
Resolution nineteen-ten-five, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Wilson County, Tennessee, to approve a lease on the reconditioned John Deere seven-seven-zero-zero Fairway mower for Watertown High School.
I got a motion in second. Now discussion? Commissioner McFarland?
Where's this money coming from? Any coming from...
Watertown High School.
Watertown High School revenues from concessions or some such?
Ticket sales and concessions.
Commissioner Breeze?
I was going to ask a question.
Got you. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Breeze? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-five, yes.
Twenty-five, yes, zero, no. Resolution passes.
Resolution nineteen-ten-six, resolution authorizing the reallocation of outstanding general obligation proceeds to cost of capital improvements at West Wilson Middle School. Move to approve.
Motion second.
I got a motion in second. Now discussion? Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I would like to amend this to down to three-hundred thousand dollars and send the rest of the, back to debt service. If I get a second, I'd also like to encourage the school system to use the two-hundred thousand that they got from the sale of land to Mount Juliet from the North Green Hill Project to back that amount up, to make sure that five-hundred thousand would be plenty to do a field house.
I got a motion to reduce the, to change the amendment here to three-hundred thousand instead of the total amount that was going to go that way, and the rest go to debt service. I got a second on that, and now we're ready for discussion. I'm going to take your last comment, it's just a recommendation to the school board, since we don't really have a say-so in that. Would that be correct?
Yeah, on the two-hundred thousand, that would simply be to encourage them that if three-hundred thousand was for some odd reason not enough, I can't imagine why. I did go out there and find out that it, the water and sewer lines are very close to this project. They go right down the road. It's a forty-four-year-old school building on prime Mount Juliet property. So to do a twenty-year note on that much money to do a field house when, I think we could probably get away with bathrooms, field house, and everything for about three-hundred thousand.
Commissioner Costley?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer this until we can get further, some more information on what it's going to cost to actually build this field house with the restrooms and the concession stand.
Okay, I got a motion to defer. I hear a second? I got a second? Any other comments on this? Commissioner Breeze, you want to comment on the defer?
Well, I can comment on the deferral as well as the original motion. I had some conversations with Mickey Hall about this, and he's saying that they're going to use the contracts from the high school and the middle school, using the same contractors. And the board, the school board, approved an addendum to the contract for one-point-two-nine-five million pending the reallocation of funds. So my understanding is that they basically have a bid from the contractor for one million, one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. So that helps answer questions.
So back to Commissioner Costley, they have got bids and stuff. You still want to leave your motion on the floor to defer? I got a motion in second. We're ready to vote on that, unless you got more discussion on voting on to the defer part. Commissioner McFarland?
Aren't we supposed to vote on Mr. Franklin's amendment first?
Vote on defer first. He's going to amend the...
Okay. Got you. No problem. Commissioner Stafford, you got any comments on the defer?
No.
Okay. Are you ready to vote on the motion to defer? If you are, are we ready over here? You're ready to vote? Please vote. If you want to defer this, to find out more information, you want to vote yes. If you don't want to defer it and you want to vote on it tonight, you'll vote no. Vote yes to defer, no to deal with it tonight. All hearts and minds good with your vote? If so, please record. I got six yes and nineteen no. Resolution to defer fails. We're going back to the amendment. Are we ready to vote on the amendment now? Commissioner McFarland? I mean, Commissioner Franklin, sorry.
Yeah, I would just like to point out again that, and I don't know if anybody heard my comment, a forty-four-year-old school, we build these things for an expected lifespan of fifty years, and a twenty-year bond issue of one-point-three million dollars isn't going to put it at a sixty-four-year, sixty-five-year-old school. I wouldn't be, have that much heartburn, except it is prime Mount Juliet property, and in ten years, there's no telling. The school system may want to sell this, take the money, and do a whole new school and start from scratch because it's financially prudent. And so I'd hate to have Taj Mahal Sports Center out there on that field they play on six times a year when we can do it for probably less than five-hundred thousand dollars easily. And that's why I made the amendment.
Got you. Commissioner Patton?
Well, that's kind of what I, I absolutely think that they need that, and I know that...
And I know that you've been adamant about getting this done for a long time. But if the school is 40-plus years old and with what Ms. Breeze said, that they were gonna use the plans from the other schools. They've... that's more modern and, you know, proposed for more kids and everything. Is that the right... I mean, I think that we should get some bids or just... I just don't think it's gonna cost that much. I wouldn't think it would cost that much money. But I want it done.
Commissioner Van Aden, I'm gonna come to you next if you give me one second. Commissioner Hall? I mean, Mr. Hall? These bids for these bathrooms, field house, and concession stand have already been done as an alternate on another school. Is that correct? That is correct. So we have up-to-date bids that add up to $1.29 million something to get this done for this facility. Is that true? Okay, I just keep hearing that we don't have bids and stuff. And I thought you had made mention of that at some point. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Good to go there. Commissioner Van Aden?
Yes, sir. I had a call a couple of days ago from a parent out at Carroll Oakland School that had heard about this. And it was brought to my attention. And I know they're not considered middle schools, but I know they're sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They don't have restrooms. They don't have fields. Southside, Carroll Oakland, Tucker's Crossroads, had a conversation with another commissioner today about Tucker's Crossroad. Are they gonna come to us and start asking money for money to build these things for them? Because, you know, and I appreciate Mr. Marlowe stating in the meeting the other night that we need to make sure all schools are equal. So those three schools are not gonna be equal to these other schools that we're doing all this for. And I'm afraid we're gonna have some parents really upset. They don't have restrooms. I had a mother that called me and said that her daughter played softball at Carroll Oakland and has stomach issues and that she had to go to the bathroom one night at a softball game and there was no restrooms. And she had to find a teacher. They got the principal, but the principal had to go and lock the door. And I went out to Southside today to pick up my granddaughter. And I noticed that I don't think there's any restrooms out there either, Mr. Marlowe. Is there? No. So, you know, if we're gonna spend that much, I'd like for us to look at those other schools, too, and bring all of them up to date. You know, they play softball. They play baseball. I know they go to the Old Lebanon High School, I think, to play football. If I'm wrong about that, somebody correct me. But I think that's true on that. And, of course, they would inherit the bathrooms and everything up there, so...
Okay.
That's my point.
Okay. Commissioner Glover?
The only problem I have with the amendment to $300,000... Say we approve the $300,000 and we give the school system $300,000 to do this. This is not enough. What's gonna happen to that money? Is it just gonna... they're gonna be able to spend it wherever they want to? Or if they say this is not enough money and it's gonna set it in an account for five, 10 years until it's time to sit there and build it? What's gonna happen with the... what's gonna happen with the money if they don't do it?
In my opinion, unless somebody wants to correct me here, if it's been designated by the Board of Education to spend $1.29 whatever, if you decide to give them three, then that three would be going to that construction of whatever they can get done for three. Wouldn't be... it wouldn't be enough, maybe, according to the bids we've got there. But that three would be going there. Now, if they choose not to do it at all, I'm assuming it'll come back to you because that's the way the bonds are written right now is because when whatever's left over, both bodies have to say yes to how we spend it. So if they choose not to, it'll come back to you. Here's the body.
Is that correct?
I agree.
Yeah. Commissioner Stafford?
Yes, sir. We've been... Commissioner Marlowe has been working on this project for five, seven, eight years, maybe. And I wish we would take out our personalities in this and try to do what's right for the kids. I understand that the other schools do or don't have it. We've... he's advocated for this for a long time. And I think it's time that we go ahead and pass this resolution as it is and find something else. We talked more this week about who we were gonna appoint for commissioner than we did this resolution. And it's $1.29 million. So I think it's time that we kind of check ourselves and do what's right for the students.
Commissioner Breeze?
I went out to go visit West Wilson because I hadn't been to the fields. And I don't know how many of you all have been out to this area. But you have to leave the building, go across a driveway area, go across a bridge, and then that's where all the facilities are. So for anybody to go in to the restroom, they have to travel back through the building. And they have to leave the sixth-grade wing open, which leaves that open to security issues. They have been renting two porta-potties. But when it's 95 degrees in August, you can imagine what that's like to use. The other problem they have is they don't have enough money to be able to rent an ADA-compliant restroom. So they are not in ADA compliance for bathrooms during sporting events. And this is not just... you know, so this is spring and fall. So... and I've heard stories, and some of you can probably confirm, but that there's a popular tree line with the men that is used on occasion because there isn't anything else. And we've got schools coming from other counties that come and play at our fields. And to have that happen, it doesn't really represent Wilson County very well.
Commissioner Glover?
I just wanna say, since we're talking about this, if Carroll Oakland doesn't have it, Sam Houston... or Southside, Tucker's Crossroad, it's kind of an issue across the entire county. I really didn't want to defer it earlier, but I kind of feel like it needs to be deferred so we can look at a solution if we're gonna try to make everything equal across the board to sit there and do something like that. I just... I don't know.
Commissioner Patton?
There was some monies available and, you know, and various things were talked about. So they've needed this for a long time. And I want all our kids to have whatever they need, and they all need to have the same thing. But I just... I threw my train of thought there for a second. But I just... I know that he's worked on this for a long time, trying to get this done. But was it not... it wasn't even in the school board's needs assessment, was it? Why was it not in the needs assessment?
On the five-year plan.
On the five-year plan, he said?
On the five-year plan? And we were talking about this when I was on the Budget Committee in 13 and 14 or 11 and 12, whatever it was. And, I mean, this has been going on forever. I don't understand why it was on a five-year plan. It should've been done long before this.
Mr. Costley?
I'll say this. And we practiced at West Wilson Middle. And Coach Marlowe, I refer to him as Coach. He coached me in middle school. I want them to have this. Mount Juliet Middle School also doesn't have bathrooms. They don't have even porta-potties down there at their softball fields or anything. I don't think it's feasible to try to bring every school equal. We don't have the money in this county to do that. If we do that, I mean, it's never-ending. Having said that, I hope you get it. I'm all for it. But there's no way we can bring every school in Wilson County equal to what we're building like new schools. We're not going to match Gladeville Middle School. If we do, we're constantly spending money. I mean, we'll never catch up.
Mr. Fields?
I understand that the three main issues are restrooms, field house, and a concession stand. Out of those three, probably the priority number one would be the restrooms. Could you build those restrooms for $300,000?
Mr. Hall? Do you remember the bid on the restrooms? Got you. Okay. Commissioner McFarland?
Question on the amendment.
Question called for in a second. I have two in the hopper. That's Commissioner Dow and Commissioner Marlowe. You're good. Commissioner Marlowe?
Now, thank you very much for at least considering the resolution. I agree with you. We're never gonna be equal. And this resolution is not gonna bring this school equal to the others. It's gonna bring them close to what Watertown and what Gladeville and what Mount Juliet Middle School has. And you talk about equalization between a middle school that has a program that's as big as any high school in this county, then compare that to a K-8 school. That is not an apples-to-apples comparison at all. K-8 school has, at best, two fields at their... they may play softball and they may play baseball. But they don't... I don't know if any of them play soccer at their home field. And I don't think any of them play football at their home field. You know, West Wilson Middle School is a small high school. It has more programs or as many programs and more students than Watertown High School. We're not asking to make these fields and these facilities equal to Watertown High School. That would be silly. And that's not what we're doing. What we're wanting to do is to get this facility up near the same as other three middle schools in Wilson County and the two schools in 11th and 10th District, who also has more facilities than this school has. I started this project almost 10 years ago. And we've been doing a little bit and a little bit and a little bit. This will finish the project. Whether it comes up equal or not with the other schools, it's the end of the project and we're done. And I think these kids in that community and those... the faculty and the coaches there deserve what's being asked for. I appreciate your support of this resolution.
So the question's called for. Everybody's talked in the hopper. You're ready to vote. You're gonna vote now. You're gonna vote yes if you want to amend the resolution to spend $300,000 towards this project and the rest of the proceeds going towards debt service. Vote yes if that's what you want to do as you amend this resolution. Vote no if you want to do something different. Please cast your vote. Everyone clear on what we're voting for? Yes to amend, $300,000 going towards the project. The rest to debt service. No if you don't want to do that. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
14 yes, 11 no.
14 yes, 11 no. Resolution to amend, it passes. Therefore, the resolution is amended and now we're ready to vote on the original resolution as amended. Any questions on that? If not, are you ready to vote? You're gonna vote on the original resolution as amended, which says the same thing you just voted for. $300,000 going towards the project and the rest of the money left over from the Gladeville Middle School going towards debt service. If you're ready to vote? We got one second, and we'll be ready to vote. You got a question?
Yeah, I thought that's what we just voted on.
You voted to amend the resolution.
Okay, now we're voting.
Now you go to the amended resolution.
Sorry. Try to be clear. Everybody understands, right? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So now you're voting on the resolution as amended. You just amended this resolution that was in front of you. That amendment said $300,000 going towards the construction of the schools and the rest going to debt service. So you amended that resolution. So now you're amending... so now you're voting on the resolution as amended.
I may have confused you with what I said, so...
No problem. Are we clear? Any questions from anybody? You just did it, but you gotta vote on the resolution as amended, which says the same thing.
It's nothing different from the... you do this a lot when you amend the resolution. You attach the amendment to it, and then you vote on the resolution with the amendment attached to it. That's all you do.
I always thought amendment was...
Only if you substitute it as a new resolution.
So now we're clear. You're voting on really the same thing. So please cast your vote. Commissioner Weathers, Commissioner Dow. Commissioner Dow. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Any questions you want to ask of me right now, please feel free to do so before we tally the votes. Everybody's good. Vote on the same thing you just got through voting on. Okay? Please record.
14 yes, 11 no.
Resolution passes. I didn't mean to confuse anybody, but we're back to where we were. Please move forward.
Resolution 1910-7, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to approve a contract of stop-loss insurance with Cigna.
Motion approved.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Marlowe? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 yes.
25 yes, 0 no. Resolution passes.
Resolution 1910-8, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to approve a contract of insurance for workers' compensation insurance with Key Risk Insurance Company.
Motion approved.
I got a motion and a second now. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 yes.
25 yes, 0 no. Resolution passes.
Resolution 1910-9, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to approve the contract of insurance for partially self-funded medical and dental coverage on behalf of the Wilson County employees, retirees, and dependents and an administrative service contract to be with Cigna.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Rich, Commissioner Costley, Commissioner Robinson? Commissioner Robinson? Commissioner Robinson? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 yes.
25 yes, 0 no. Resolution passes. Any old business to come before this body tonight? Commissioner McFarland? Any new business to come before this body?
Can we get this thing with colors back around and later when we can save a little better?
Aaron said yes.
It's what I call value.
Okay. Commissioner Patton? Please get cake out of the commission room, conference room, before you leave. And Commissioner Ali, glad to have you aboard with us. I need one more motion. We are adjourned.